All right, good morning. I want to welcome everybody to our Marshall County Board of Supervisors regular session as we meet on the seventh day of April 2015 at 9:00 a.m. in the courthouse meeting room number two, northeast corner, third floor with all three members present. At this time, I'd like to ask you to please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a notice to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public at a time allowed for discussion. You are required, requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The board has given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate and a roll call vote will follow. First item on the agenda is the approval or amendment of the agenda that has been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I approve. The agenda is printed.
I will second that.
And a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Graybeinbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item number two is approved of the minutes for regular session of March 24, 2015. Number three, the annual manure management plan update. Burt Farm and Livestock, Inc., ID number 62502, site number five. Manure management plan received and placed on file. No changes to the manure management plan. Number four is an annual manure management plan update with Dennis Anderson, ID number 62848. Manure management plan update received and placed on file. No changes to the manure management plan. Number five, annual manure management plan update, Erin Borton, ID number 65862. Manure management plan update received and placed on file. No changes to the manure management plan. Number six, the annual manure management plan update, Tamco Pork Two, LLC, ID number 58267. Manure management plan update received and placed on file. No changes to the manure management plan. Number seven, annual manure management plan update, JT Farms, East Side, ID number 63208. Manure management plan update received and placed on file. No changes to the manure management plan. Number eight, annual manure management plan update, Prestige Farms of Iowa, LLC, ID number 67142, PI dash three four one. Annual update report received and placed on file with the following changes. Acres added, changed optimum yields and using manure analysis for determining application rates when applying manure. Item number nine, approved claims. As audited and authorized, the county auditor and recorder to issue payment is same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting will be included with all claims paid for the month of April. The April list of claims will be part of the first meeting in May. I would entertain a motion on our consent agenda.
I would motion that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
I second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry Nun, roll call, please.
Graybeinbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Moving on to item number 10, secondary road fiscal year 2015 Iowa DOT budget amendment. Discussion and possible action on the approval of the amended fiscal year 2015 Iowa DOT budget for Marshall County Secondary Road Department. This amendment is to cause our DOT budget to reflect the same changes that were made with the Marshall County budget amendment on February 24, 2015. I'll turn it over to our county engineer, Paul Guylandfeld, for an explanation. Again, this is kind of an annual yearly deal that we do, just allows you to make two budgets out.
I wasn't really going to say anything more than what you just said, so it pretty much covered it right there. But we do have to submit our budgets to the DOT on, you know, on their format. Really, it just takes our budget that has the multiple line items and it compartmentalizes them into less, you know, sections, but still just reports on each individual section of our budget.
And I think that's one thing that, everything that the engineer's office does is basically run through the state DOT, so.
It's not all through the DOT, but it's all reported to the DOT ultimately.
All right.
We break our budget line items down much more intricately than they need.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I would motion to approve the amended fiscal year 2015 Iowa DOT budget for Marshall County Secondary Road Department.
I second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry Nun, roll call, please.
Graybeinbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Moving on to item number 11, secondary road fiscal year 2016 Iowa DOT budget. Discussion and possible action on the approval of the fiscal year 2016 Iowa DOT budget for the Marshall County Secondary Road Department. And again, Paul, I'll turn to you and get the microphone closer. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of explanation.
Same story, different fiscal year. This is the submittal of our recently approved, first draft of the budget. So it's the same document, same format. It's just taking what we just recently approved for our local budget and reporting it to the DOT.
All right, very good. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve FY 2016 Iowa DOT budget for the Marshall County Secondary Road Department.
I will second that.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Graybeinbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, item number 12, secondary road fiscal year 2016 Iowa DOT construction program. Discussion and possible action on the approval of the fiscal year 2016 Iowa DOT construction program for the Marshall County Secondary Road Department. And I didn't say as much that time, so now you can explain.
The, this is our, what we call the five-year program, and it's submitted to the DOT every April. And it's just submitting to the DOT what we plan on building for projects, where we're at with them as far as how we're planning on funding each project, because each project as it's programmed also has the funding source listed. And it's just a good planning tool. It does not guarantee that these projects get built in the year that they're programmed in, but it's our intent to build them in this year. We usually program a little bit more work than what we can actually build, because you could have a project that has a hang-up either with some type of environmental or historical or right-of-way issue, and that could make the project get delayed. And so then we need to have something else that we can build in its place. And so we will program for that reason more work than what we can actually get constructed.
I think this is a good program that the public knows that we are planning out to 17, 18, actually five years out.
2020.
That we do have, we do have things in the works. It just takes a while to get everything put together. And again, this kind of makes it more visible of what actually we're actually doing in preparation for our secondary road department.
Yep. So that's all I've got on the program.
Couldn't agree more. If you have questions on specific projects, I can. Just several of the items I just want to mention are contingent upon us receiving grants in the years that you've got them accomplished.
Correct.
And I think that's an important thing to do, because.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of work out here. And again, we look at the North Center Street Bridges, four of them out there. We're going to have to somehow work our funds around. And this gives an opportunity for the engineer to start applying for these grants and make them, see what's available, what's not available.
If we do wind up with the federal grants, we'll be in good shape and can move these projects up. And if not, we're going to have to move some of them back.
Some of these bridges have been on the list for 30 years, so Paul's got them here ready to go. And so there's been a lot of work, a lot of time over the years to make this happen. So I think it's.
I don't like to make guarantees, but the Crooked Bridge won't be on this list next year.
That's pretty close to a guarantee.
Paul, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that far.
It's going to get built.
It's been on this list for what, 30 years?
It's going to get built. You know, now that you've said that, if that doesn't happen, you're the one that's going up to have coffee with the boys in anger.
Yeah, with anger.
I'll take that. I'll take that.
I think that was engineered before I even moved here, and that was 40 years ago, so.
I think you're probably right. All right, I would entertain a motion on this item.
I would move that we approve the fiscal year 2016 Iowa DOT construction program for the Marshall County Secondary Road Department.
I'd second it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Just one item. That Crooked Bridge is fiscal 16. It is going to be built next construction season, not this summer.
So you're arguing it's already renewed?
No, I just wanted to clarify that that's what I'm guaranteeing, is that it gets built next summer.
It's already renewed.
It's in an October letting. We're not even going to have it under contract until November.
Any other discussion?
Okay.
Harry Nun, roll call, please.
Graybeinbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right. Paul, you've got a good five years of work ahead of you, so keep them going forward. Moving on to item number 13, a resolution, this is abatement of mobile home taxes, resolution number 2015 dash 00121, 0021. Where pursuant to Iowa Code 445.16, the county treasurer has determined that it is impractical to pursue collection of the total amount due to the delinquent taxes and personal judgment remedies. And I'm going to call, he's already up here.
I couldn't get that on.
We got a battery in.
Here.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, guys. How are you? Good. This is under 648.22A. It's executions of mobile homes. It's in regards to a trailer that was abandoned through the courts. And what happens for a court owner in these situations, they have options, and the options that they're looking to do is retaining the mobile home. And in doing so, a replacement title needs to be issued and the tax is cleared. The intention of this code is so that in these cases, if there's back taxes owed, a court owner actually, we want them to take, you know, ownership of it so that it's on the records. And that's why the abatement of taxes is allowed in this, because you may have court owners that would not actually put it on the books, and then you got silly stuff going under the table. So that's the procedural reasoning on this. Any questions?
Now, what happens as we clear this, is that mobile home available for sale at that point, or is this completely taken off there?
It is the court owner's mobile home then, because it was abandoned on their property.
So it could be resold?
It could be, correct.
And the taxes could be.
Correct.
Again.
Correct.
And, but like you say, you've been doing this, carrying these things, and we try to clear them off every year about this time, so.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Chairman? All right, now therefore be it resolved by the Marshall County Board of Supervisors that the amount due be abated, and the county treasurer is directed to strike the amount due from the county system. I would entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution number 2015 dash 0021, abatement of mobile home taxes.
I will, excuse me, I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry Nun, roll call, please.
Graybeinbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Item number 14, resolution to authorize funding from the Harvester Tiff District to be used towards the Kibbe Building Total Rehabilitation and Renovation Project for Low and Moderate Income Housing, conducted by Downtown Leasing and Lofts LLC. This is resolution number 2015 dash 0022. Whereas Downtown Leasing and Lofts LLC is proposing a total rehabilitation and renovation project of the Kibbe Building at 125 to 131 East Main Street, Marshalltown, Iowa, for the use as four affordable housing units. And whereas Downtown Leasing and Lofts LLC is proposing financial, financing through a variety of sources, including Downtown Lease and Lofts LLC, Challenge Grant from Main Street Iowa, Block Grant from Iowa Economic Development Authority, and Stormwater Management Grant from Iowa Economic Development Authority. And whereas Downtown Lease and Lofts LLC has requested support from Marshall County in the amount not to exceed $5,000 to be funded with Harvester Tiff funds. And whereas the Marshall County Board of Supervisors has identified this project as an important rehabilitation and renovation opportunity, which meets the criteria for funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Marshall County, Iowa. This board hereby authorizes support in the amount of not to exceed $5,000 to be made to Downtown Lease and Lofts LLC for the rehabilitation and renovation of Kibbe Building from the Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund. Funding is contingent upon state and federal grant approvals, and funding shall be awarded not to exceed $5,000 when the contractor can show proof that the proposed rehabilitation project of the property is 100% complete. And we've got Barb Hextren, the owner of this project, so Barb, if you had to come up and say a word, you've got to kind of hold this microphone, but you got to share.
It all began in, excuse me, it all began in August. My partner and I, Jeff Mitchell, bought the Kibbe Building and set up an LLC, and then proceeded to apply for some commercial grants for the downstairs, which we got the Challenge Grant. And then the opportunity to apply for the block grant, which was through the 2008 flood monies that our county, or that 83 counties were awarded, and these were for community improvements. And we were one of 20 recipients that got that block grant. And so we're proceeding with the upstairs and the downstairs. And the east wall, that gets repaired in the block grant. And the roof, all the construction will start, we're on schedule for August 1st due to all of the parts of the puzzle that have to be put together. So August 1st will be the start date, pending any little roadblocks, but that's where it's looking right now. And in addition, the, you know, it has nothing to do with the housing issue, but I want to, but yet it does. I want to explain that that vacant lot that's on the corner, we also own that, and we received the stormwater management funds that are tied to the block grant. The city or the county wouldn't have got them otherwise. They're tied to this resource from the flood monies of 2008. And we are going to see a pocket park made out of that corner. It's going to incorporate permeable pavers, evaporation ponds, shade pergola that'll have photovoltaic cells on top that will drive a little bit of energy for some of the systems. It'll have a cistern that catches the overflow rainfall from the roof and the parking lot, and that needs a pump. It'll have benches, it'll have grasses, flowers, plants, trees. It'll be open to the public except when there's particular reasons, either, you know, a private party on our part, or ice where people shouldn't be in there, or some renovation. But basically, it's going to be a community park downtown. The other exciting part with that is it's going to have the east wall, which is of course unsightly and been unsightly since that fire. It's going to get repaired with a certain, you know, kind of, we haven't figured out, some kind of block. It's not going to be brick, it's not going to be split-faced block. It's some kind of special block that meets all the codes. But in front of it will be a living wall. So that's also a green feature that goes with the stormwater management, the living wall. Well, that's not just me standing up there being alive.
I was going to say, I wondered if you were going to be involved.
It's a green initiative where plantings are placed vertically. And then they'll be irrigated by the stormwater system, the rain that comes down, and it will be all maintained with an irrigation system, and then us on a ladder once in a while, it sounds like. So that'll be kind of an interesting feature and a compliment to the park, and we're real excited about that.
When do you hope to have everything completed?
Well, probably July of next year. Probably a one-year period is what the grants requiring, so everybody's going to be on board to try to make that happen. And then the downstairs is on the same schedule. We're going to start August 1st and try to be done sooner than that, because it's not as extensive as the upstairs. But everybody's going to be working together, so we might as well just be having one mass.
Sounds like quite a project to me.
So, yes.
Jump into, Barb. Hope you wish you success, and they're going to, county adds our responsibility to the four lofts or low-income housing, $5,000 upon completion.
The low-income housing will be, it's stipulated to maintain that for five years. And then after that, we can choose to have the apartments at market rate, which is also complimentary to our needs in Marshalltown.
Okay. Well.
So these will not remain low-income housing for more than five years? It's going to go to market rate after that.
Resolution's been read. We've heard comments. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we approve this resolution, 2015 dash 2022, resolution authorizing funding from the Harvester Tiff District to be used towards the Kibbe Building Total Rehabilitation and Renovation Project for Low and Moderate Income Housing, conducted by Downtown Leasing and Lofts LLC.
I would second the motion.
Okay. I would like a point of correction, if I would, that we will adopt this, not approve it.
My fault.
I would second the motion to adopt this resolution. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry Nun, roll call, please.
Graybeinbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, very good, Barb, now get to work.
I got my work hat.
Good. Sounds like you're going to need it. All right, moving on to item number 15, approval for use of courthouse grounds. Heart of Iowa Big Brothers, Big Sisters request approval of the use of the courthouse grounds and electricity to host an event on Saturday, July 25, 2015, celebrating their 40th anniversary. This event will include various games and activities and is open to the public. Anybody want to speak on it? And speak on this or anything? If not, I talked to Lynn Carroll yesterday, and I told her that we're enthusiastic about approving this. We've got some issues to work out with, because they do request all the various games, I think there's a dump tank, there's a bouncy house, and you've got, I left my letter in the office, but yeah. They're going to dump tank, the bounce house, vendors, and they're going to include a lot of local supporters in this. And we've got to look at proof of insurance, we've got other things to look at. We wanted a guarantee, I told her, I wanted to guarantee her, we wanted to guarantee her the use of the grounds on that Saturday, July 25th. So I would entertain a motion.
I'd have to agree that that would be totally appropriate, but I would request that the dunk tanks stay on the concrete surfaces.
And I told her that yesterday.
And they can't do this until we have that proof of insurance.
Yes, and she's well aware of that, that we're just securing the grounds for her.
Okay. Based upon that, I would motion that we approve the request from Heart of Iowa Big Brothers, Big Sisters, for the use of the courthouse grounds and electricity to host an event on Saturday, July 25, 2015, from 1 to 3, celebrating their 40th anniversary.
I second it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? And again, with us okaying this, we can visit with her and tell her what our obligations and restrictions will be on the grounds, so. Any further discussion? Harry Nun, roll call, please.
Graybeinbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Moving on to item number 16, this is public forum. This is a time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county, other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum. We now open the microphone up. Anybody would like to make a comment? Seeing none? Hearing none?
I would like to.
Pardon me?
I would like to.
Okay, come up to the microphone and state your name, please.
Thanks, Bill. Hi, I'm Sheri McLennahan, and I've talked to Paul a couple times, and I've talked to Bill just a couple days ago.
On the phone.
On the phone. And I wanted to inquire on the bridge out there, if there's going to be any action taken out there by my property, where when the county had came out, they had changed the ditching, which when we had high flood waters, it totally eroded my pasture, undermined it. It took their fabric, it took their riprap, it put it clear out in the middle of my pasture. Any future flooding is going to destroy it even more. I'm very familiar with flooding, because I live by the Minerva Creek, and I understand it takes fences and stuff like that. But this particular spot, Paul's been out several times, he's got pictures, he knows about it. So I would just like to know when something was going to be done or what's going on with that, because I haven't heard from it for a while.
We had, we'd hoped to try to get something done when it was still frozen, and then when the frost started to come out, we've got to wait for things to stabilize, because you had said that we could cross that pasture, but I know right now that wouldn't be a good idea, and it would probably get a lot of things stuck and damaged.
While it's raining, yes, but it dries really fast, because it's a very sandy soil, and I think Bill's very familiar with that, too.
And Brad has located some broken concrete that we can use to start the base of that hole and get that, our intent is to build this hole up. I should, I could have brought you some pictures, but I wasn't prepared. But they, there's a large erosion hole that's taken out the corner of where her fence is, just downstream of the bridge. And we think that if we can start with some broken concrete and some riprap-type material, and then place some material that we had taken out of the ditch previously, was it two years ago, or was it?
It was, I believe it was 2012.
Then we could take that material and top the erosion control material, and then she could put her fence back on where at least it was. The, and there's no guarantee that it's going to be a permanent fix, but it's going to be better than what she has right now as far as the reliability of her fence. The bridge was replaced before I came back here, but it's, you know, the Minerva Creek kind of has its own way about doing things, but according to Sheri, it is worse now than it was before the bridge was replaced. And so I want to try to make, you know, some sort of mitigation of this problem.
And it actually, like when the county came out, and I don't really know why, I used to work for Marshall County and did a lot of, actually, I worked on the Crooked Bridge, too.
Gee.
It's your fault.
Another person.
We've been looking for.
No, it wasn't four years ago, but.
We've been looking for somebody to hang this on while it didn't get done.
But anyway, when the county came out, on the back slope, I don't really know why they did it, but the back slope, and Paul saw that, they dug the straight up and down, clear back to the fence. I mean, it just left no back slope, just straight up and down a good distance. I don't usually see them do that when they're cleaning ditches. You usually want to leave some type of back slope, but they.
And it may be a situation where we need to purchase some additional right-of-way from Sheri, and it would just be a permanent acquisition that would move her fence back a little bit. There's, it's a strange situation, because there's a large culvert just south of her place there that comes across the road, and the waterway just goes right down the ditch to the, right, you know, to the downstream side of the bridge. And I'm not sure if at one point, I was going to look at aerials, but it may have actually crossed over at some point in the, you know, in history. Instead of going down the ditch, it may have just gone right across the pasture and gone to the creek.
Yeah, that could way.
But maybe 100 years ago, you know.
Before the creek was rid.
It just, it looks like anytime you try to take water and make a 90-degree left turn with it, it's going to cause problems.
Yeah.
Sheri, tell them you're what, you're about two miles north of Clemmons.
Yes, a mile and a half.
Just so people kind of know where you're at.
It's a mile and a half north of Clemmons and a mile and a half basically south of V-18, from the Purple House.
Yep.
And so it's that big county bridge, right down there by 140.
This is the property where it's on the east side of, east side of the bridge?
On Eastman, yep.
Yeah, where it's degrading on the corner there.
Right.
Yeah.
And there's been, she's tried to have, to sustain a fence there, but it usually just ends up kind of hanging out in midair.
And until that change took place back, because I actually printed out a Google thing, and I believe it was 2012, I have the, I didn't bring it with me, I should have, but that would have been the year they came out and cleaned it out. And then in 2013, we had the first of a few flash floods. And that was the first time, in all the years I've lived there, I've never had it change anything there ever, until that change took place. And it was like, the stream feeds into the main, the stream's feeding in, you've got the main creek coming. Well, when they dug that straight down, it like, and even though at the end they ripraped and they put the fabric, it was straight up and down. it was straight up and down. When that flash flooding came, it was hitting that bare dirt, and it just undermined it. And it took, would you say a half an acre?
I'm not the best at that. I'm no surveyor, but yeah, probably something on that order. But they, where those two streams come together, and the way it comes out of the bridge, it causes a swirl. And when that starts happening, it just starts eating, and it just keeps eating until the water goes down. And it's, I want to try to interrupt that mechanism if I can.
If we need to acquire additional right-of-way, are you approachable to that?
Yes, I am. And I just, and I think Paul knows this, but I wanted to address this, too. I don't have a problem with you guys coming through. I have a field drive where you have to.
On your property.
On my property. I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to get it done early enough, because I do have an alfalfa field that you're going to have to drive through. And like right now, it's not going to hurt, you know, when it's not like, it's not going to hurt it. But as it gets taller and if you have big trucks, then it's going to be a problem.
And I was talking with Brad to see if we might need to actually just build a temporary entrance right by the bridge. But if we can avoid that, that just saves time and costs and everything.
And I really don't have a problem with, and you should build a drive-through, because there's ten acres. You'd be coming through part of the wetlands. I put ten acres in a wetlands. So you'd be coming through part of that to get to that pasture. And like right now, before the grass is real tall and stuff, the cattle are locked off of there, and they're not even out there. So there's not an issue with having to put up a temporary fence or anything. I just, I don't know the weather. If we get more flash flooding, it will take more, and it will be redoing that again, so.
Sounds like we got, you know, cooperation.
I think so.
Yeah, and I'm going to say just keep contacting Paul. He's very accessible to visit with and come back to us if we can help in any way, but hopefully we got something.
We all know where it is. I can't remember if it was just Paul and I or you, Paul and I, but we went past that exact spot and talked about it.
And Bill knows where it's at, I don't know, too, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, seeing none. The next item was the adjournment. The next regular session is scheduled for April twenty-one, twenty-fifteen at nine AM. All business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted by the county auditor and recorder's office or the board of supervisors' office by Thursday, April sixteen, twenty-fifteen at one PM. There be no further business. To come before the board, our meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-one. Thank you.